Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us here today. We do have some very special moments today that we're here to recognize. And before I call the meeting to order, we will have an invocation, so if you'll join me in a moment of silence, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will call to order the Tuesday, November 7, 2023 Business Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
You do. The county attorney's office has reviewed the entire agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over all matters.
Thank you. And with that, do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we are going to move into Item 2, Ceremonies and Proclamations. And our first item is Item 2A, A Resolution Supporting Veterans Day and Operation Green Light. Chris Mays, Veteran Services Officer Supervisor Presenting for Staff. And you're not Chris Mays. We know who you are.
And it's my distinct pleasure and honor to offer a resolution for your consideration and approval, recognizing Douglas County's Veterans Day event with a special emphasis on women's veterans and the county's participation in Operation Green Light to show support for veterans that live in our county and to raise awareness about the unique challenges veterans face and the resources available to assist them and their families at the county, state, and federal level. Operation Green Light is a National Association of Counties initiative that is occurring across the United States, and Douglas County is proud to participate in lighting up the Miller Building, Wilcox Building, and the Justice Center buildings. And with that, I can go ahead and read the resolution supporting Veterans Day and Operation Green Light.
Please, sir.
Whereas the residents of Douglas County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by all citizens, and whereas Douglas County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas Douglas County is home to more than 20,000 veterans, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $50 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that between 44% and 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, whereas Douglas County has invested in suicide prevention by offering treatment, mental health first aid training for veteran service officers, creating a mental health liaison for veterans within the Veteran Service Office, and providing information on the crisis line 9882 veterans, and whereas Douglas County joins the National Association of Counties and encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs across the United States to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, whereas Douglas County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, and whereas as its Veterans Day event on November 11, 2023, Douglas County will place special emphasis on female veterans that have served our country along with all their veteran counterparts. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for Veterans County. Douglas County hereby declares November 6 through November 12, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active services. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Douglas County encourages its citizens to, in patriotic tradition, to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 6 through November 12. And then pass and adopted this day, the 7th day of November, 2023, in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado. That's the resolution.
Darcy, thank you and Chris so much for all of your service. We know that our green light is up in front of the Miller Building already. And for us, and I know for you as well, we celebrate and honor veterans, not just the 6th through the 12th, but all year. Any questions or comments from our board?
I don't think it came out in Ms. Hoffman's introduction, but she used to be Airman Hoffman of the United States Air Force.
Yep.
So, Darcy, thank you so much for your service and the continued service.
Thank you as well for everybody in this room who has served or supports service.
Well, and thank you for your continuing service as one of our veteran services officers.
Commissioner Teal, thank you for that, and thank you for your service on this board and as a distinguished veteran.
I always like to say because there's always a level of work and sacrifice that goes into any form of military service. But at the same token, I always like to remind everybody it was something good for me. So I got to drink beer on three continents. I'm good to go.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thomas?
Darcy, I'd like to thank you for your service. Were you going to ask all the military people or veterans to stand up during this part?
As soon as you've made a comment.
Okay. Want to make sure we do that. You know, I grew up with a dad who had been in the Navy, and we had fun putting on his uniform and his cap. And, you know, he wouldn't talk to us about his service in Korea. But I just know that I value my freedom, like I'm sure everybody in this room does. And our freedoms are only here today because of those who don the uniform and protect us, both here and abroad. So thank you for everyone who has served. My husband went to Annapolis and served on a battleship for many years as well. So thank you to all of you who have served. We truly owe you a debt.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And with that, if you are a member of our distinguished military and have served, we'd like to stand, and if you could stand, we'll recognize you. Again, thank you so much for your service. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Darcy, for your service. That takes courage. My daughter-in-law is a top U.S. fighter pilot, T-38 trains all the, trained the men seven years at Columbus Air Force Base before we pulled out of Afghanistan. And I would like to not sing a song because I don't have my guitar, but I will say thank you to those who served well in our military, those who didn't have no gratitude for. Same with anything we do in life. My gratitude is to the good men and women of the world. And my song goes like this. It's 2 minutes and 37 seconds, and I think I can do it. "I'm a warrior when it's raging, and I'd stand on the front line. I'd fight for my brother's gift of life. I'd fight for his liberty. I'd fight for his freedom. I'd be the truth. God set me free to be and see. I'd stand on the front line. I saw him lying, dying there. I saw Vietnam in my face for as long as I can remember, over and over. I saw him lying, dying there, his hands bloody from fighting a war. I asked my brother his name, but a bullet he took from me in his chest made his body and mine lame. He said to me, 'The earth beneath me seems to shift.' And I gave my brother a sip of water from a tin cup and a morsel of food I found on the ground, but his empty gun lay too far away from him on solid ground. And he said to me, 'We were warriors when it was raging. Now in Afghanistan, men and women served together, air flight on the ground, army, military, naval, you name it. We have war, don't we?' He said to me, 'We were warriors when it was raging. We stood on the front line, and our lives are divine.' And I said, 'We stood on the front line, and our lives are divine.' And I kissed his head and wiped the blood from his face and thanked him for... And I said to him, as his soul flew to God Christ and his brethren, and he said to me with his last breath, 'We are warriors. We stood on the front line, and you saved mine.' And I said, 'Yeah, and I'm on hell's earth fighting it alone, but you're on God's throne.' And I said to him, 'So why did a band put a bullet in your chest?' And now my question is, why war? Why war within each one of us? We have so much. We're a blessed nation. I'm the most selfish. I see it every day of my life. Men who have served in our military, a veteran man, I served for many months, and he called me last week. He has liver, deceived, alcoholic. He jumped from a building in Afghanistan, sniping, and compressed his backbone and had to use drugs, and has a felon, couldn't get a house. I supported him with $10,000, his first home since 2003, $10,000 it took. And then he could access on Five Points, he can access on Colfax, 13th, the Veterans Association. Now he's in Wyoming in a drug rehab, but he'll die. He'll die soon. And, but he had a few minutes of freedom, right? So war, we can hail the men who bring war through peace or peace through war. It's your decision where we stand as a country. As we look at the flag, my...
Ma'am, if you can wrap up your comments, thank you so much for that. We appreciate it. Any additional citizen comment? Troy, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the resolution supporting Veterans Day and Operation Green Light.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. Thank you again, Darcy.
Thank you.
So with that, we are going to move on to a heavier portion of our agenda today, which is Item 2B, A Resolution Honoring the Life and Service of Former Commissioner Roger A. Partridge. And I believe we have a video to share.
Here's the honest-to-God truth. Roger Partridge was never angry, unkind, disrespectful, or small. As a man of faith, Roger didn't just talk about his values or brandy them about, but actually and quietly lived them out as the gentleman cowboy that he is. Roger was also always deeply humble. Even though he accomplished so much, he was never proud, boastful, or looking for opportunities to take credit. This job wasn't about him or politics. It was about service, whether he got credit or not.
Six, eight years ago, there was an individual visiting for a conference. And I can't remember, she was someplace from the east. And she said, she knew I was a commissioner, and she said, "You know, there's something special about Douglas County." She said, "Almost when I came across the county line, there was something different here." And I said, I looked at her, I said, "Do you feel safe?" She said, "That's it." So when we look at what we do to maintain a good civil society, we have proper law enforcement. We know we have safe homes, safe streets, safe schools, and safe businesses. So that means so much. And I guarantee you, defunded police is probably not an issue after what people saw yesterday. We thank the police. We thank all law enforcement for what they do every day. And to see Commissioner, well, what do we say, Sheriff, Commissioner, Marshall Weaver, you know, what a kind gentleman he is. He emulates many things I think a lot of us want to be. Doug, I was thinking we were going to go through some of the many projects and the successes we've had, and they're just numerous to remember. And as I've worked on my resume, you just look at the opportunities I've had with others, and I've done nothing on my own. It's the collaboration, the camaraderie that we see so much that makes everything. So as I wrap up here, I know you've got a good board of county commissioners coming forward. I know we have excellent county councils and mayors in this area, and that's one thing we really focus on. It's that whole partnership of governments, whether it's the library board, the school board, whether it's Highlands Ranch Metro District. Everything that is here that governs where we live matters. And I know we have a good set of commissioners coming forward, and I feel very fortunate to still be a citizen and know that it's all going to be taken care of. I hope we get to see a lot of you out and about because it just warms my heart to be able to be associated with all of you. So I can just say, it's your world, squirrel, and I'm just out to grab a few nuts because I really understand what that means. We're all in this together. It really matters. So thank you for the opportunity for eight years. And God bless you all, and we hope for a great 2021. Thank you, everyone.
So with that, today we do have a proclamation, and Roger's successor here with us, Commissioner Teal, our vice chair, is prepared to read their resolution.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. It is my distinct honor and privilege to introduce this resolution honoring the life and service of former Commissioner Roger A. Partridge. Whereas countless members of our community were greatly saddened to learn of the passing of former Commissioner Roger A. Partridge, an exemplary public servant and human being. And whereas Roger was born in Rochester, Indiana, on July 5, 1957, and passed away on October 29, 2023, at the age of 66 in North Fort Myers, Florida, and whereas Roger first came to Douglas County in 1987 to start a physical therapy practice and was elected commissioner in 2012, he gave up his practice to focus on his new job, serving the citizens and taxpayers of Douglas County. He served until 2021. And whereas prior to being elected as county commissioner, Roger served as a member of Douglas County's Planning Commission and was a strong advocate of the county's agricultural heritage. He also co-founded the Douglas County Beef Education Grant Program and spent three years as beef superintendent for the county's 4-H program. And whereas during his tenure, Roger made a significant impact on the county as a whole through his leadership in advancing such efforts as the I-25 Gap Coalition and Associated Wildlife Overpass Crossing, the concept known as Hard, Heavy, Fast for Wildfire Response, creation of the Unified Forensic Crime Lab, purchase of Sandstone Ranch, 4-H calf donation program, and funding to enhance school security and mental health programs following the STEM school shooting in 2018. And whereas in 2018, Roger was honored by the Northwest Douglas County Economic Development Corporation with the inaugural Code of the West Award for his longtime commitment to the Douglas County Fair as well as the business community at large as a community leader who exemplifies the values at the heart of the cowboy way. And whereas Roger's sense of humor, kindness, and graciousness enriched those fortunate enough to know and work with him, and his spirit of dedication to public service made him a beloved and respected figure throughout Douglas County and beyond. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners recognizes, honors, and commemorates Roger Partridge, not only for his dedicated service to the county and its residents, but also as someone whose contributions and public service helped shape Douglas County as we know it today. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners and on behalf of the employees of the county express sincere condolences to Nadine Partridge and the Partridge family. Read and introduce the 7th day of November, 2023, in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado, by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, and I advocate for its passage.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any Commissioner comments?
Well, I've always appreciated that top-right picture of the three of us, Roger and Abe and I at Sandstone Ranch. And I remember when the commissioners first looked at buying Sandstone Ranch, and it's Dave Weaver in the back and Roger and I. And probably the thing about Roger that I remember the most is shortly after I won the primary in June of 2016, after most of the elected officials in the county had endorsed my opponent, including Roger, Roger sent me a really nice, really gracious text and said, "Congratulations. Now my job is to make you the best commissioner that I can." And I always remembered that graciousness whenever I worked with Roger. So his loss is truly felt by not everybody in this room, but his dear family, who I'm sure is just so grief-stricken. They're not sure what to do. So rest in peace, Roger.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. That was beautiful. Commissioner Teal, anything else?
You know, the only thing that, I mean, there's, well, there's many things to add about Roger. I mean, he's been a tough act to follow, and I don't know how closely I'm actually following him, and I don't know how well I fill his shoes because Roger did make such an impact. I do see Councilmember Dyke in the back. John, you have to tell the story of the rickshaw because that sort of captured, well, it sort of captured how Roger could be very whimsical sometimes. And then do something that, you know, we were talking about service in the military a little earlier. And Roger had that quality that tends to be a hallmark of a good military leader. He never took himself too seriously. Of course, he was somber. Of course, he was serious about his work. But he himself, he, boy, the guy could always find something to smile about, couldn't he? So I think it's right and appropriate that we pass this resolution today, and I advocate for its passage.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. You know, Commissioner Roger Partridge was a true gentleman. He was a gentleman cowboy who served his county with great faith, commitment, and dedication. I had the honor of working with him daily through some of the most challenging times, from the STEM shooting to COVID-19. And as chairman of our board, he kept meetings light and positive, even when agitators abounded. During the height of his cancer battle, he took negativity from persistent detractors in stride and kept his focus on our governance role. Roger never succumbed to pettiness, even when it would have been easy to, and always took the high road. Roger seemed to be happiest during the annual county fair. Where he could shed his suit and tie for a cowboy hat and boots, fully inhabiting the sound of joy, and people coming together, always his highest goal. You know, I can almost hear Roger whispering beside me now to share the cowboy code of ethics. I shared this on social media, and I'll share it again today. Number one, live each day with courage. Number two, take pride in your work. Number three, always finish what you start. Number four, do what has to be done. Number five, be tough but fair. Number six, when you make a promise, keep it. Number seven, ride for the brand. Number eight, talk less and say more. Number nine, remember that some things aren't for sale. Number 10, know where to draw the line. Rest in peace, my friend, and again, thank you for everything.
With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment.
That's what we stand for. That's why the flag is behind a man like that, and I don't even know him. But I can see his eyes, and God shines light through our eyes, and we can trust people like that and like this, Laura and Abe and George, and trust them as far as to make decisions. But we trust what we see in our own lives, and that man, I would trust that man any day. God bless. Rest in peace because you deserve it. Maybe that would be the better time to go right now, but no, not really. It's time to stand for what we believe as a nation under God, one indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Additional citizen comment?
Okay, I'll try to get through this. So as a longtime planner for Douglas County, I think Roger Partridge was just always a fixture from the, I was a fixture, he was a fixture from the time I got here. He was on the Planning Commission, maybe one or two times he was appointed, but he was always around. Then he became a county commissioner, and like so many have said, he was just a genuinely nice man. He really was. And he was universally like my step. Steph just loved him, and I think it's because he was so down-to-earth. He would talk to you like you're just a regular person. You know, he was genuinely interested in you, and he treated everyone with respect, and he was truly a servant leader. He, of course, he had to take action on a lot of really controversial land use applications and proposals. And I would say he really did so while holding fast to his principles. Those were tough times. But he was always measured in what he said publicly, and he never hesitated to ask questions. Sometimes I had a hard time understanding what his question was, but we would finally get to it. But, you know, he had, he didn't let pride stand in the way of getting the information he needed to make the correct decision in his mind. So he would ask questions. He was certainly a humble man. But I would say he had an inner compass that was evident, and I really believe that was his Christian faith. I do. I think that drove his life and everything that he did. And I thought I'd share something the Apostle Paul wrote to Timothy near the end of Apostle Paul's life, and I think it really applies to Roger, and it should give his family and friends a lot of comfort at this time. So this is what Paul said, and I can imagine Roger saying this as well. "I have fought the good fight. I have finished the race. I have kept the faith. Now there is in store for me the crown of righteousness, which the Lord, the righteous judge, will award to me on that day, and not only to me, but also to all who have longed for his appearing." And I would just say that, you know, I'm sure that the Lord is greeting him now and saying, you know, "Well done, good and faithful servant, Roger Partridge." So we'll remember him. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Thank you. Senator Wiens?
Roger was pretty incredible, as we all know. And I think his faith really was very essential to how he, how he served people. And through all the things that he went through and all the difficulties that he had while fighting cancer and still serving the people as he did so well with hardly a hiccup, he really exemplified the peace that passes all understanding every day. And his positive twinkle in his eye that he always had, there was always something positive he was going to try to spin out of all of this. And I stayed in touch with him with, you know, phone calls and texts and stuff in Florida, and gave him a really hard time for moving to Florida, but that was, seemed like the right thing to do. And just a couple of months ago, there was a hurricane down there, and it looked like it was, it was like the end of August. It looks like it was going to go where, close to where he lived. And so I sent him a text and says, "Hey, it looks like you're getting a little rain and wind down there. And how are y'all doing?" And he says, "Well," he's texting me back and says... And he says, "Well," he texts me back and says, "Just a little wind and rain, and it's, we're all going to be okay here, and besides, I haven't had to shovel any snow." So, anyway, he has talents, and he had talents that, and things that we can really learn from, and I think Jeanette's attraction to Paul's epistle is very, very appropriate, because one of the things that Paul did, and one of the core teachings of Paul, and of course, you know, you're giving me an opportunity to be a preacher here, so I'll try to not be too long, but one of the main things that Paul taught, and one of the ways they were so successful at spreading Christianity in an environment where they were basically up against the greatest military and economic power in human history, the Roman Empire, yet they were very, very successful. And one of the key tools to learn from Paul's teachings is he resolved to be uninsultable. No matter what condition he was in, no matter how anybody treated him, he would not be insulted. He would stay the course, stay going forward, and it wouldn't change his approach to things. And I think we saw that the insult of cancer, we saw the insults that you get in politics every day, and Roger, Roger had a very, very wonderful, wonderful way to deal with that that we can all appreciate and learn from. See you in heaven, Roger.
Thank you so much for that. Additional citizen comment?
Good afternoon Commissioners, I was going to allow Commissioner Repolo to go, but she says no, she insists upon me to go first. So, a lot of great things have been said here today, and I hope for God's sakes that Nadine and the boys are listening to this, and this will be shared with them. I look back at the times with Roger, Jill and I are back looking at pictures, just reminiscing over old photos, and you never know or recall how you meet people in your life, but for some reason, there's certain people that come into your life that you'd never forget. And I've known Roger for so, so long, and, you know, to capture our lives together in three minutes, I can't do it, but the stories I have of Roger Partridge, and Laura, you talked about the ranch, when we went down there standing on that bridge, I'll never forget his smile. I remember being over at the fairgrounds, and you're right, Abe, so many times, he's so happy to be there, that white shirt and that cowboy hat, and talking to everyone, and always insisting that I do the judging on the cookout on Sundays, and I don't know why that was, but he's right behind me grabbing all the food, and I'll never forget, and he was in the hospital, I was about three minutes away from him in downtown Denver, and I said, "I'll come up and see you," and he's, "Well, you can't right now," because he was in intensive care for like a month. And finally, the day came when I could come up, and we talked about it every day, and he says, "Hey, come up and see me." And so I got up there for a minute, and he goes, "By the way, can you bring me a piece of pizza?" I'm like, "What?" I'm like, "From where? What do you want it?" He goes, "Just get it from downstairs." I walked up to the hospital room, the smile on his face, oh my God, I'll never forget it. But Roger was more than a Commissioner, more than a friend, he was like one of my brothers, and he knew that. That, I remember he said, he told me he's going to move to Florida, and I'm like, "Why in the bleep are you moving to Florida?" And he goes, "Well, it's a good place to be, and such is the snow, he's, I'm just kind of tired of pushing the snow weave," and he always called me Big Weave, and it's funny, that story came about, I told my little brother's Little Weave, and I was Big Weave, and he always shared that, because you're always Big Weave, and the story goes on and on with Roger, and it's just, I love him to death, and he's like one of my brothers, and this is just heart-wrenching to see his passing. But when I got that call early in the morning that he had passed, there was no doubt in my mind, I knew where he was immediately. I know where he is now, and I know he's with us, and he knows in my heart that I love him, and there's not another one like him ever will be. What a great man, what a great Commissioner. Commissioner Repolo?
Thank you Dave. And Christie, I'm going to ask that we just take the timer off?
I'll see if I can do this. I look at that picture in Roger, it was so much to me, he was a colleague, he was a confidant, he was a friend, he was my physical therapist, he was my campaign treasurer, we served on the Planning Commission together, there wasn't a time when that man was not kind. Everybody in this room, everybody in the world who knew Roger, that's the first thing that comes out of their mouth, gentleman, kind. We would go to CCI conferences, and he's yucking it up with the old ranchers on the west slope, the Commissioners from the west slope. There isn't more that I could add except that he's in heaven. The day I learned that he died, I knew instantly, he's in heaven. He had a grand parade going into the gates of heaven, because I've never known a better human being. Roger is going to be missed, Roger. We all love you, Roger. I was blessed to serve with him, I was blessed to know that man. Thank you.
Thank you Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you Dave. Additional citizen comment? Councilman Dyke?
All right, Commissioner Teal got me up here. I thought it was important to be here to show up for Roger, because he always showed up for us. And I don't think I could tell the Ricksaw story. But he was a good man, and I appreciated the ability to serve with him for 10 years, eight years. He was, he was, you know, when he came to me, it was Dr. Cog, Jack Hilbert was transitioning out, and Roger was the Douglas County Director. And, you know, I told Jack I'd do everything to make him as good as he can be for us, and he gave me so much more, and I thank him for that. And if you want to hear the Ricksaw story, you can send me out for this, thank you. God love you, Roger.
Thank you Jill. Additional citizen comment? Any additional comment in the room? Troy, do we have any comment online?
Thank you Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Art Griffith, how are you sir? I know you're used to going to that podium, we're going to have you at this one.
Get more steps in now. You know, Roger got to know us personally, and we started to look back where we were at certain times, and we were both in the Big Ten. He was at Purdue, and I was at Minnesota, and he was stuck also watching swimmers, as well as football players. And I said, "Man, I had a really bad headache." And he goes, "I would have been the one that gave you the Tylenol," you know? And so he started serving way back when, even before I knew that. And when he came here, I just enjoyed so much working with him at Dr. Cog, and pouring his heart out into serving this community. What an incredible, solid person. And I just want to thank God for the life of Roger Partridge and his ability to share and serve that with so many. Thank you.
Thank you Art. Any additional citizen comment or any staff comment? Okay. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring you back to the Board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution honoring the life and service of former Commissioner Roger A. Partridge.
Second. So we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. And thank you to each one of you for those really, really touching comments and for being here, appreciate that. So with that, we'll move on to item three today as best we can, which is our consent agenda. Let me just ask if there's any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll close citizen comment and bring you back to the Board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Please, the Board, I do have a motion to approve all requests and all items A through V on the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. We have no regular agenda items today, so we'll move on to item five, which is any additional citizen comment or organizational comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is, what was scheduled on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, and you'll have up to three minutes. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments? Are there any citizen comments online?
Thank you Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay.
So I met Maggie and Barbara yesterday, and I know Steve from my own mental health crisis when I moved to Douglas County, I mean, to Highlands Ranch, two years, a year and a half ago, Steve tried to coordinate counseling for me, I don't want counseling from just anyone, but thank you Steve for your counseling yourself, your talking to me was enough. But the initiatives that, I understand, sorry, Barbara, is that correct? Barbara does a lot of the facilitating of the support that Steve and Maggie, I don't see Maggie anymore. But, so, I have been through extensive brutal mental health initiatives pushed upon me, and I would love to just support in any way I can, anyone who has any ideas that we could rebound on each other, resound on each other, redefine the mental health things, but, so we're going to get together and have lunch somewhere as just a people and share ideas, but I would support anything, anyone, anything. I'm retired, so I have much time, but I don't have any time, it seems. But, so, thank you for reaching out to me, Barbara, and just asking my opinion on something that I experience ill education about. Thank you so much, and we'll meet with Maggie, Steve, and Barbara at some point, and I'll report to you, Art, just personal conversation. Thanks Abe, for your personal, I just, no other than just getting together and looking at the disaster we're facing, and the economic pressures, and Mayor Johnson's poor initiative, I'm not laughing at him, it's just that I was on Bannock and 47th again, four weeks after being handcuffed and spending two nights in the Denver County Jail by some unrest, but those men are good too, rather be there than our mental health hospitals, at least they protect you, and you have civility. But as far as, not on my shoulders, don't worry about me, but what I'm trying to point out is that there's a little chaos in our world, isn't there? When Zelensky can stand up, and Elon Musk is now saying we need laws for AI, and then Zelensky stands in front of the world and says, "We can, with improved artificial intelligence, we can have a better war." And I thought, "Which better war? You're going to cut another child's finger, my child's second finger off and her left arm, that's a better war to use Zelensky? Withhold the apple she'd like tomorrow or the drink today? Better war? Interesting concept, isn't it? So the peace starts here in here, and it connects the heart with the mind. I think that was God's solid and podes when He put man on earth, He gave us a choice. We can choose freedom, or we can choose eternal life or captivity, and the choice is ours."
Thank you for that Jill, and again, I appreciate your comments, and just want to share that I have the highest regard and respect for Barbara Drake and the team that she represents and the mental health initiative, and I'm so pleased that there may be an opportunity to further engage and have that conversation. I think Barbara and our county team represents what's best about Douglas County, is good people with a dedicated willingness to serve, so thank you for that. Let me ask if there's any additional citizen comment, either in the room or online.
I have no additional online comments, sir.
Okay, thank you Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment, and then ask the Board if there's any Commissioner comment.
No, the comments.
I would like to thank Kim Morrow and Tracy Montano from the Unified Forensic Lab. The name was recently changed, and I have to make sure I get the words right. Thank you for being here. I saw in the news today that there is some investigation going on at the DNA lab in CBI, and I've been communicating with Kim today, and she assures me that she's keeping an eye on it, but nothing like that will ever happen at our lab. Thank you Kim, thank you Tracy for being here. And I would just like to remind everybody that in today's county manager report is the information if you want to contribute to Wreaths Across America. There is a wonderful group of American Heritage Girls here that have adopted Cedar Hill Cemetery in every Veterans Day, I'm sorry, every, just before Christmas, they go out and put wreaths on all the graves of the veterans. And you have the opportunity to go online to wreathsacrossamerica.org and look for Cedar Hill Cemetery in Castle Rock, and then you can make a donation to help fund the wreaths, so those scouts have the ability, they have those wreaths, and every year somehow they have boxes and boxes of wreaths, and no veteran gets left off. So this is your opportunity to participate. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Thomas, and I'll just add, you know, life can be very chaotic, but I think Roger kept it very simple for us. He was a kind man that did kind things, and I think we can all learn from that lesson, including myself. I think in the midst of the chaos, being kind and doing good things can get us pretty far down the path. So with that, let me ask if there's any other business of the Board today?
No other business?
Okay. And for the county manager, anything for the county manager?
You know, just one quick call out, if Rodney Felton, Coach Felton, his team, he head coached his team to a Super Bowl victory, a youth team at Stuttler, and quite a journey, so they had game, was it game two, they got smoked like 42 to zero. I think Coach Felton has a career as a coach, Rodney played football at CSU, and I wouldn't be surprised, I mean, any victory is big, but what a, what a special time for those young men and to achieve what they did, and anybody who knows anything about youth sports knows football is very competitive. Is it 11, 12-year-olds, is that what?
13-year-olds.
Wow, yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you Doug. Let's give Rodney a round of applause. And go Rams. With that, the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 14, 2023 at 1:30 PM. All adjourned, this meeting will pick up for our public hearing at 2:30. Thank you very much.